So I would like to call to order this regular board meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners for the month of December 2022, excuse me. And before we dive into our agenda, I think it's worth noting that with the death of Senator Scott Bennett, that this agency, like so many others in his district, has lost a real friend and somebody who was really active in helping move things forward. Big loss for the entire community. First item of business is to accept the agenda with the modification. Sierra is here tonight to let him get back home. Do we move up the first old business item made to immediately after public comment? Is there a motion to amend the agenda in this way and approve it?
So moved.
Second.
That's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? And again, we're masked up here. Let's do a roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 And so we have an agenda for the evening. So that will take us immediately to, well, we will immediately after public comments. Sorry about that. Public comment. Is there anyone from the public here who would like to address the board? Seeing no indication of that, then we have staff introductions, starting with CUSR.
Hello.
Hello.
See you. Thanks for coming.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Christina Mott. I'm the CUSR manager and our athletics coordinator, and this is Cole.
Yeah, I'm the inclusion and volunteer coordinator for CUSR. I recently just started.
So thank you for inviting us.
Yeah, and I know we've all seen him a couple of times here over the last few days, but or few weeks, but I thought to officially bring him to the board was a good thing to do. So we appreciate you coming. Cole's off and running on the inclusion. Looking forward to all the work he's going to do to kind of help mesh both Champaign Park District and Urbana Park District together. So it's some new things we're working on, and I'm excited about that. And of course, Christina, how many months has it been now?
Oh, gosh.
Number?
Four months, I think.
Four months.
Yeah.
She's been making some good strides. She's actually putting in place the things we're doing with inclusion. So welcome, and just wanted to formally introduce you.
Appreciate it. Thank you all so much.
Nice to meet you.
Well, welcome, and thanks for coming out tonight.
Yeah, really pleased with Christina's leadership. She's been a long-term special rec employee, and I think we're seeing the benefits of that leadership now, so.
Thank you so much.
And for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we will mention Cole is an EIU grad, right? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Meeting.
Okay, and item C, award presentation.
Yes, tonight we have an award to present to the board. I wanted to call up if you guys would like to come up. Savannah and Chelsea. Savannah Donovan and Chelsea Prawl from the Nature Center led this past year's Arbor Day celebration. As you know, Arbor Day is a really big deal for us in Urbana. We've historically worked with the city of Urbana, obviously their group that's charged with hosting the actual official Arbor Day as part of their Tree City USA status. They have to do it every year. But we've been partnering, gosh, for a long time, working with Derek and Corky and all of our staff and working with others. This last year, there was a real focus that staff came forward with on this idea of, you know, exciting Arbor Day event, working with older high school students. And so we invited Urbana High School over first time in my time, that we addressed that older adult group, and the idea of a career fair. So we had an exciting day set up at Blair Park. There were probably at least 15 different career represented, representative of the staff and volunteers that were there. And then as the student groups came over, they could rotate through the different stations and also formally and informally talk with different professionals about industry, green industry, you know, related type fields, whether it was teaching, education, research, planning, design, management, everyone was represented. So they did a super job. Their leadership was just outstanding. And as a result, I thought it'd be good, I'm an ISA award or board or on the member for ISA and the Illinois Association of Arborists, and so anyway, we've applied for and received the Gold Leaf Award. So we'd like these folks and the board to step up, we'll get your photo. But is there anything you would have wanted to add about the event that stuck out in your minds?
I just wanted to say it was all Chelsea's leadership, and I'm just here to show support today and appreciation for her.
Absolutely. We're just really proud of this event. Obviously, that's the kind of thing we want to do. And if we impacted even one young person and their career choice, we know it would be worth it. We think everybody got a really good flavor, and I think it was one of the best events that we've had for Arbor Days. So very, very proud.
Well, I think that's a really terrific idea. I mean, so often the Arbor Day stuff has been aimed at much younger people.
Exactly.
And it's nice to do a little broader spectrum. That's great.
For sure. And I think everyone that attended was probably at least interested in seeing there are a lot of careers related to this, and you could probably find yourself, you know, if you're one of those young people, maybe I want to do that or that. So anyway, I'd invite the board and both of you to come up. We're going to get a photo. ISA would like to send it back. They're going to put it in their publications and their information, so we'll just get a group photo.
Yeah.
I'll let you guys hold that. Jump to the crowd. We have a little spot right here that we can use because the wall's white and I'll shut the door. Could still more room.
I think my favorite part is they got to choose to be there. They have permissions of sign things, and they love that.
Everyone good?
I think we're back.
Here we go, team.
Okay. Forward.
Ready?
Laura, can you do a close-up too?
I am.
Yeah, there you go. We'll give them a choice.
I'm trying to get that white light out of it, actually, if I can get just... Ready? Got it.
Awesome.
Vertical post in me, thanks you.
Thank you so much. Why don't you take that?
Appreciate it.
Great.
Green industry, I'm sure, thanks you.
Appreciate you. Thanks for coming out. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay. I believe that takes us up now to the moved forward old business item, Roman numeral seven A, consideration and action on ordinance 2022-08, an ordinance providing for the issuance of approximately $893,000 in bonds. And I think we turn it over to our good advisor, Erin Gold.
Erin, welcome. Laura, did you want to say anything as an intro or?
Erin is going to share with us the results from our bond sale, and we're glad that he's doing it in person and is able to take questions, and where is yours?
Thank you for the intro.
Absolutely.
Good evening, everyone. Here to present the results of the sale of the district's annual rollover bond. Specifically, these are issued as general obligation limited tax park bonds, series 2022. We held a competitive sale last Thursday where we received six bids. The low bid was a 3.64% net interest cost from Illinois National Bank, IMB Champaign, Illinois, and the second place bid was a 3.78% from First Secure Community Bank. So these bonds, as your annual rollover bonds, issued as general obligation limited tax. General obligation means it's paid for by a direct property tax levy, but that it's limited or constrained. So the first limit is how much of this type of debt can the district have outstanding in total? That's referred to as the district's non-referendum debt capacity. And the second constraint is referred to as the district's debt service extension base. And this is how much the district can levy each year to repay the principal and interest as it comes due. So when the board authorizes the issuance of these annual rollover bonds as general obligation limited tax fitting within these parameters, it has the authority to do so without going to referendum. So the structure of this issue specifically, we anticipate closing this issue on December 27th. It is a one-year issue with the final maturity on December 15th of 2023, and the issue size was adjusted post-sale to $893,380 to fully utilize the district's 22 levying capacity that I previously discussed. In total, this issue will generate $880,680 in new money to support the capital initiatives of the district. And then I think it's always good to talk a little bit about the interest rates and where we are in general. So this bid is up 325 basis points year-over-year from your prior year rollover issue. But that being said, this is, and what I've experienced with all of my rollover bond issues for park district clients is extremely competitive, given the current interest rate environment where we're in. The one-year treasury is up over 440 basis points over the same time period, and that's relating specifically to what the Fed is doing to combat inflation with raising short-term interest rates. So we do feel that this is competitive, given the interest rate environment that we're in. And the nice thing about this issue is that it's only one year long. So your rollover bonds will be, they're not perfectly efficient. Obviously, they're not perfectly efficient, but they mimic market conditions. So when interest rates are low, you benefit from having a lower interest rate environment. And when interest rates are higher, you could take faith in knowing that it's only a one-year issue, and you'll be back into the market, the private placement market again, very, very soon. We therefore recommend that the district's general obligation limited tax park bond series 2022 be awarded to Illinois National Bank, IMB Champaign, Illinois, the price of $893,380 at a net interest cost of 3.64%. And then I would also note that later on the agenda, there is an abatement ordinance pertaining to the district's outstanding alternate revenue source bonds, and I'll just speak to that briefly while I'm here as well. So what's happening with this ordinance, an abatement is essentially you're telling the county clerk, don't extend and collect this specific property tax levy. And this specific property tax levy is a backup property tax levy relating to the district's outstanding alternate revenue source bond issue. I believe it's 2019A. And the way those bonds are issued as alternate revenue source is they're designed to use the existing resources of the district to make the bond payments. So it's very important each year you go through this abatement process, instructing the county clerk, don't extend and collect these taxes. We have the revenue sufficient to make these bond payments. And the reason you issue these bonds as alternate revenue source is because you get better interest rates, because it has that backup property tax levy. So that sort of speaks to the abatement ordinance that you pass each year that will be in front of you as well. And then obviously, I know the district is going through a planning process right now for larger capital initiatives, and the Spear Financial stands ready to assist the district as it moves forward in any capacity, and just want to wish you all happy holidays. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Erin? Is someone prepared to make? We have two items we have to approve that are related to this.
I move to award the low bid on bonds to Illinois National Bank with an interest rate of 3.64%.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the point? Hearing none, let's do a roll call, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously with the four commissioners present voting. And do we have a motion to adopt the bond ordinance that goes along with this?
I move to adopt bond ordinance 2022-08, authorizing the issuance of $893,380 general obligation limited tax park bonds, series 2022 of the Urbana Park District.
Second.
Yeah, I think that is with second. Is there any further discussion on this point? Hearing none, and let's do a roll call, starting with Roger this time.
Aye.
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 And that also carries unanimously with all four commissioners present voting in the affirmative. And thanks again very much, Erin.
Thanks. Great seeing everyone.
Thanks, Erin.
Happy holidays and good luck, good luck next year.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon.
See you at conference.
Definitely.
For sure.
Okay. I think that brings us to the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee report.
I believe the notes indicate there's no report at this time, but it'll be forwarded. So I can't remember who's taking notes, or may have been somebody missing, but we'll certainly get that followed up.
Okay, then, we're ready to move on to the...
I think there is a written report.
I'm sorry.
There is a written report.
There is a report. The notes in the annotated says there is not.
Yep.
Thanks for noting that. There is the report.
Okay.
We could answer any questions for those of us that were there, if there were any questions.
And that will take us then to the consent agenda. And for those who might be watching at home, the consent agenda rules for this agency are such that any single commissioner has the right to remove any or all items from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and action. On the consent agenda for this evening are approval of the minutes of the November 1st, 2022 study session, approval of the minutes of the November 8th, 2022 regular board meeting, the receipt of the monthly departmental reports, namely administration, planning and operations, and recreation, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, and lastly, action on ordinance 2022-11, authorizing the sale/disposal of personal property of the district. Is there any of these items that any commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda I see no indication of that, so under those circumstances, is there a motion to approve these items in an omnibus fashion?
I move to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded, and under our rules, there's to be no further discussion at this point. And we need to do a roll call vote, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. Then takes us to Roman numeral six, the reports, starting with financial reports, Laura.
Thanks, Michael. We will start with our revenue and expenditures report for the past prior 12-month period, which includes the budget for the current period and preliminary audit results for the seven months ending in November 30th, 2022. Sum one, first page of the report, this is all funds excluding Capital Improvement Fund. Revenues for this period, $10,869,245. Total expenditures, $7,683,618. This is, this means that there is an excess of revenues over expenditures at $3,185,626. Page two, sum two, this shows only the Capital Improvement Fund. Revenues for seven months were $1,162,871. Expenditures were at $2,291,902. Expenditures exceed revenues, resulting in a deficit of $1,129,032. In December, here just in the next week or so, we'll be getting the funds previously spoken of, $893,000 from our annual general obligation bond sale. Page three, labeled sum three, this is our snapshot as the district as a whole, all funds. And just noting that our ending fund balance of all funds, $15,909,836. The remaining summary reports are the individual reports for our three main operating working accounts, and that's the general fund, the recreation fund, and the museum fund. Last page is our indoor pool fund, UIAC. Moving to the treasury report. Again, this is a report of the amount of cash the district has on a single day, November 30th of 2022. Page one, all 25 funds are listed, and it is showing where all the cash is invested. Those investments total up to $18,493,293.94. Page two is the top section, lists the amounts that we have in interest-bearing accounts of that $18,493,000 on hand. $17,257,000 is out in investments at varying rates. The bottom section is our inter-fund loans, no changes during the month of November there. Page three, the last section of the treasures report, lists disbursements for the month of November. Vendor payments match the accounts payable reports included in the consent agenda, and total disbursements of funds which include payroll and vendors is $827,968. I present to you the treasures report for audit. I move to accept the treasures report for audit.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we should do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. Takes us on then to the capital budget report.
Capital budget reports. 2019A, the page one of this report. We had expenditures under the Crystal Lake Parks improvements section. We paid $4,429 to Fair for the Crystal Lake Park road design, system design category, and $16,072 to open road for construction of the same. Under health and wellness initiatives, $37,729 paid out to Farnsworth using the park grants bucket, and $21,314, again paid to Farnsworth using donations and contributions. 2022 capital budget, we received $800 in tributes and donations. One was towards the tree and one was towards the plaque, for a total of $800. Under our expenditures umbrella, construction crew projects, we spent $125 for delivery of some block, $390 for our hardware, and $535 towards lumber, for a total just over $1,000. We had $14,496 paid out to Fair. This is part of the Crystal Lake Park Broadway ITAP grant bucket. That's all we had on 2022. And expenditures in the 2021 capital budget, under the Blair Park improvements, we paid $5,506 out to MSA. This was part of improvements to the tennis area. We paid a large chunk to Petri Koundi for design of the outdoor learning pavilion, $278,014. Down a couple sections under the Crystal Lake Park improvements, a small tab, $211 for lake water testing. And under contingency, under Blair Park improvements, $1,650 paid to All Weather. This was for a bank shot post repair. There were no activities during November in the 2020, 2019, 2017 budgets. I'll turn it over to Derek and Andy for updates on capital projects.
And Derek, I pulled up some pictures here. I wanted to start with some images from the Uptech Pavilion project. This was almost where we were at last board meeting, so I was hoping to kind of show you that there's been pretty significant progress here in the last month. So this is looking at the pavilion, obviously, looking towards the northeast and east, and a little closer to the fireplace portion and the interior rooms. On the left here, this is the same door. So on the left, this is a door to an interior storage custodial closet, and this is that same door today. So they're fully masoned, complete around the building. They have the roof on. They're working on interior finishes. And so now this is the pavilion as it looks, like I took this last Thursday or Friday. We can see a lot of the structure is pretty much done, the exterior portion anyways, plumbing and electrical work, and they're working on the flooring in the restroom this week. And just kind of a closer look, looking into the inside of the pavilion, this door would go to the staff storage area, this door would go to the restroom, and then you can kind of see the finished, secureable, lockable gate of the fireplace now that was put in into last week. And then moving towards Blair, our fencing contractor has been on site for about two weeks, maybe a little bit more. Been a little bit slow of a go, but they should be all wrapped up by the end of this week. They have the fabric completely surrounded the southern three courts, which is over here. And then their, last time I looked yesterday, they're about halfway done with the fabric portion around the northern four courts. They may have finished the fabric today. I didn't have a chance to run out there, but they still have to do the ties around each of the posts of all seven of the courts, but for the most part, everything's finishing up. We did authorize some additional repair of damaged posts and crossbars, and so everything's looking pretty good out of the site. Should be opened up for use here fairly soon. I know the contractor's been allowing some people to come in and play pickleball and stuff on the southern courts, too, so hasn't been a completely blocked out portion. And then moving towards Crystal Lake, sorry, it's a little blurry. This is our ITAP slide that I shared a month or two ago with everyone. I just had a quick update on that ITAP multi-use path project along Broadway. Again, that will connect the previous ITAP on Park and Broadway, and then cross over the saline with the pedestrian bridge, and then we'll have a connection to the northern multi-use path along Broadway Avenue up towards the outdoor pool and the Nature Center. And our update is that we are still on schedule with IDOT bidding, and we actually have a bid opening date that's done through IDOT, and it's January 20th. And so I anticipate we'll have some costs to share at the February board meeting. Just as a reminder, right now, if everything comes in per our estimates and our grant threshold, we won't have any local funding that we would need to apply to the project. If bids come in higher, we'll have to come up with some local funds in order to cover those overages. We will hear more in a little over a month on how those bids are coming in. And moving or staying in Crystal Lake, going towards the road project, the asphalt, the main contractor, Open Road, had a few items they completed in the last week or two. We had a portion of the road that was specified to get an aggregate wedge where there would be a steep drop from the new asphalt to the existing, you know, aggregate surface of the turf. And after the asphalt was laid, we saw a pretty significant amount of area where that drop was actually all throughout the road, primarily from the Broadway entrance to the pool bridge. So we worked with our engineer and Open Road to come up with a different kind of solution that's actually utilizing the millings, the asphalt millings there as that wedge to kind of create a safer option for vehicles so their tires aren't running off that edge and then rutting it up and potentially causing damage to their vehicles as well. And so this is the same material that we use now at the Dog Park parking lot. It'll actually compact and kind of harden over time. The color will lighten as well, but we're pretty happy with how that turned out. The contractor, while they were doing this, also was able to install their ADA parking signs in our parking stalls all throughout the park site. And so all that is now remaining under that contract brings us to the retaining wall in the Lower East Lake House parking lot. That's associated with the turnaround, the new garbage enclosure, and then all the parking That's associated with the turnaround, the new garbage enclosure and then all the parking improvements with that lot. And so where we're, where we're standing now, I think last update, I talked about the stone veneer as an option that we were presenting. Fair Graham, our engineer, presented three options for the contractor. One is they would have an opportunity to basically address the wall and make it meet the specification that was provided in the bid. And the other option would be to completely tear down the wall and rebuild it. And then the third option, which is what we were investigating on my last update, was that stone veneer. And so the contractor's been given those three options. They updated us this week that they're still evaluating their next steps. And I anticipate that in the next week or two, we should hear back from them, where they want to go on their next steps moving forward. I do know it's probably not going to be until late spring until much of this work would be able to be completed. So we're looking at an extended closure in that area throughout the winter in probably all three scenarios. And then my last update, this is pulling from our last board meeting where we were going through our difficulties with procuring vehicles and equipment. The board authorized the purchase of three trucks with a not-to-exceed price. And so we promised that we would come back to the board and, and let you know what we came up with, what our solution and what we ended up doing. And we were looking at a Sourcewell bid at the time, which is through the National Auto Fleet Group. And we had anticipated their pricing to come out in the week following our last board meeting, which it did. And then subsequently, a week after those pricing, that pricing information came out, we received pricing information from the Illinois State bid. The Illinois State bid actually came in a little bit lower than the Sourcewell pricing. And it worked fairly well because the, we were working through the proposals that Sourcewell was providing us to make sure that the specifications met our needs. And that back and forth took that week, week and a half. And we were actually beginning to get a little worried about how many build slots would still be available. When this state bid came out, we were actually be able, we were able to evaluate that pricing, confirm the specifications and place an order within 24 hours. And secure those build slots through Maro Brothers Ford. And so we've placed that order, you can see the prices there. I think we had seventy thousand authorized for the four fifty, seventy thousand authorized, authorized for the, or I'm sorry, sixty thousand authorized for the two two fifties. That grounds two fifty, you'll see a difference in price there. That's with the snowplow package that comes with that, that added some cost to it. So all in all, I think it's turning out fairly well considering the challenges that we faced for it. I appreciate the board working with us on that and being open to authorizing those expenses for us to be able to act quickly on that. So we're still working through some additional service packages that'll go with it with a different company as well once it's delivered. I talked to someone from Maro Brothers last week and he can't guarantee me a delivery date, but he is being told that this summer we should have our trucks. Which is much better than I would have anticipated. We just got a Gator this week that we ordered almost a year ago.
Did you say next fall, Andy?
He said the summer, but he said don't hold him.
Sorry, just taking notes.
That's all I had, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Andy, and that takes us then to the executive director's report.
Sure, I have a number of updates, so we'll jump right in. Appreciate Michael remembering Senator Scott Bennett also. Just wanted to mention, if you didn't hear, there's going to be a celebration event Monday, December nineteenth at 10:00 AM at the Cranert Center for Performing Arts. Probably a number of staff will be attending. And as Michael mentioned, it's a terrible loss, you know, Scott was dear friend and cared about parks and recreation. We were just getting ready to make plans for the conference lunch where legislators attend, often he would come. Up next would be our legislative events in the spring, making our trips over to Springfield, so be greatly missed. And very influential, working with Carol Ammon's office on the supports through DCO for extensions of the KRT, which we hope still roll out in the near future. And we can announce and talk more about that, so difficult to think about moving forward. But with his legacy, certainly we can carry that forward in, in parks and recreation. Just wanted to thank the Urbana Park District Holiday Committee for putting on a great staff holiday event. Thanks to Meredith who came and represented the board, we had a good time, she handed out all the awards and we had a delicious lunch. I think it was one of our first events back together because we didn't have our fall staff retreat due to poor weather. So we had a great turnout, everyone had a great time and appreciate playing in operations, hosting us all right here. Today, we had the Urbana Park District Senior Club Holiday Party, Roger Diggs, Corky Emerson and I attended. As always, had a terrific time and the food was great and the audience was awesome and the entertainment. The club just does a great job, it's a lot of work, but they really enjoy it and get really well, good attendance for that, we're happy about that. Moving along best to the listed items, just a You Belong Here update. As you know, we received our Phase Two report and Corky Emerson, Mark Schultz and I met with the Urbana Free Library staff, our counterparts there. They're very excited about working with us, we came up at least with 10 new ideas of what we can do. But I think we're all in that same situation of how do we communicate better with our audience that's out there? We know we have traditional methods that work and have continued to work like our brochure. But then we know, and we got some information and shared the report with them also, they're reading it and reviewing. But we see opportunities to work together to get our message out so that we're all working together. And we see an opportunity and role for the Urbana School District. Obviously, they have some more built-ins because they have a lot of families they serve with different languages. But in working together, we think we can make many end roads to making people more aware of our events and activities and to feel more welcome. And, you know, that we're inviting and have them in mind and intentional, so we're excited about that. Moving ahead, we continue to work on our Wondell Sculpture Garden 25th Anniversary, the arts and culture team met today. We still have many months of fun, amazing things planned and we have some new art coming. I think there will be a rollout of a 25th Anniversary poster and some other surprise things that staff's working on. But we've also heard a lot of great comments about visitors that have seen the sculptures at Meadowbrook. So we're happy that at least folks are getting out and seeing that. Moving on, the Kickoo Rail Trail, I think in the 2023 year, Urbana Park District will be leading the Steering Committee again, it'll be our turn in rotation. Mentioned we'll be working on trying to receive the DCO funds that are slated through our legislators for expansion of the KRT. So we anticipate that and we'll report as we get more information. Update on the Athletic and Wellness Survey, as you know, we're working with the Farnsworth Group and the survey tool went out to the community. We had all of our typical friends, neighborhood groups pushing it out, asking people and worked early on with the Urbana School District to see if they would help us. And they did, they were able to push it out to over 9,000 households. So I think we heard the number was over 800 responses so far. Survey will be closing soon, today maybe? And so obviously we'll be assimilating that information. But we just want to thank all of our neighborhood groups, all of our, you know, staff and newsletter groups, everyone that helped push that out. I think we'll get a lot of good responses and probably the confidence knowing that a lot of people saw it. And there'll still be, you know, more individual talks and opportunities for, you know, receiving some level of input. But we do want to move, move forward with that to help us move on with the master planning and some of the outcomes. Champagne Urbana Special Rec, last week, the board hosted a send-off for Joe DeLuce, as you know, Joe's retiring. So we wanted to say thank you for his contributions and just had a great time working with Joe. I think we've recalled all the achievements that we have achieved, you know, over the last, you know, five and six years. We've really made a lot of ground, obviously, the CU Special Rec Center, which is open and facility set up just for special rec in our participants. And then we, at the meeting, talked about great ways we can still work together and how we hope to see folks at our new health and wellness facility when it opens. As a quick follow-up, as we know, the new director at the Champagne Park District's been hired and is on board. Sarah Sandquist is her name, I'll be meeting with her next week. We've communicated via email and she's eager to learn more about Urbana and how we can all work together in the, in the future. As you know, the IAPD, IPRA State Conference is coming up, I think we're making plans for that. I mentioned the lunch and so we'll continue with our, with our plans for that. We look forward to seeing what we can learn. And for many of us, we'll be returning in person for the first time in a few years, so we're excited about that. Just want to continue on my list here. I wanted to mention the TIF two, I think last month, we received some information about TIF two closing. Laura offered to follow up with the city to get some limited information about the growth of the TIF. Laura, did you want to mention that?
I did, I reached out to Stephanie McMahon, who is at the City of Urbana, the Economic Development Supervisor. And she indicated that her records showed that the TIF two EAV in 1985 was nine million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. And as of 2021, it's the nineteen million, three seventy-six, eight ten, so good progress there. She just cautioned, keep in mind that the TIF two boundaries have changed over the years with the creation of the Central TIF. So, you know, areas that were, you know, could have been amended, you know, with, with that inception. So she is hoping to have more details here early in 2023 after the Joint Review Board and she will share those details with us as soon as.
Something in the ballpark of 10 million.
Uh huh, yep.
Impressive, always pleased, obviously, we don't ever know all the details, but knowing at least it's positive growth and it benefits us is good news, so.
For sure.
Thank you, Laura, for providing that additional information. Derek Liebert and I had our Zoom meeting on e-bikes today with our wide area of folks, had a very, very good meeting. I think had good attendance, we had Savoy, City of Champagne, University of Illinois, let's see, MTD, Urbana Park District, City of Urbana. So Champagne County Bikes, so we, you know, I'm not an expert on e-bikes, I know a little about, about them. And we also had Shay from VO, the bike company that provides them. So we kind of walked through with Champagne County Bikes to kind of introduce, you know, what's, what's changing. We had Shay also talk about the enormous growth and popularity of e-bikes in this area. I think each person that had something to add talked about what their agency or their district, you know, was, was doing. But it sounded like there's a real interest in promoting that by the numbers, certainly phenomenal. I think Billy Wilcock sent me a note, here it is, just on some quick notes that she had found out of some of the uses and I think with the e-bikes. Basically, from last January to November of this year, total ride minutes of 209,473 minutes on the two versions of the electric bikes. And the total ride miles, just within, let's say, less than a year, over 38,000 miles just on the e-bike. So it shows a high level of popularity, the other sheet, she had the number, I think it's starting out early in the year, like around 1,200, 1,300 riders. Closing in in late August, October, over about 6,500 users of the e-bike. So that's enormous growth, obviously, they're here to stay, everyone talked about the accessibility, the affordability. And probably the, kind of the message we have been saying, it's really a mode of transportation, sort of micro mobility ideas. People using it for work and school, there's a lot of report that, you know, it's really an essential thing to get people to where they need to go. And that it can be a link and a bridge to electric vehicles, so it's moving in the right direction. So I would expect our next steps are to follow up, kind of look at our policies, work with our policy study group and how we want to make any adjustments to any park codes to encourage or. Right now, I understand the university still doesn't allow it and I think we'll get more information about to the Ys. But we know they're everywhere and so we, we encourage that. We also talked about the other, you know, mobility devices, scooters and, you know, stand-up scooters, sit-down types and others. And, you know, again, they're here. I think we're, we're just trying to recognize that and see how they best fit in. Certainly, we also addressed concerns, you know, bikes being left on sidewalks, which makes them impassable and creates that level of inaccessibility. And so it sounds like Champagne County Bikes is interested in more of a, kind of a positive campaign signage. I think they want to get involved, you know, with, with some level of that. So I think with everyone working together, we can make this an easy transition, encourage more modes of transportation, certainly at low, lower cost.
Did VO mention how many physical, like, units they have, like, how many bicycles they have in town?
I thought it was 750 was the number, if anyone in our audience knows. I know they had, I think that's their capacity and they started with around 300, 350 and then they added more. And I think there's a couple of classes in there, but we can get more information of what, what they. In fact, I wanted to mention too, we may want to work with Updak as a program. I think bringing some of those folks in would be a very interesting program, something people probably see but don't know much about. It might learn a great deal and, you know, to us, you know, working at our trail systems, looking at the KRT, see a lot of applications. So again, it seemed very positive. I wasn't sure what to expect, I thought we might have more mixed reviews, but everyone seems to be coalescing in the same direction. Champagne Park District has already updated theirs, they had extensive comments, you know, I think, you know, credit to their staff and their board. They really, you know, I think, as we understand, there were pedestrian concerns, people coming to their board meetings, talking about, you know, what pedestrians need and safety. And they were able to see through that and assume that there's room for both and that we need to be aware of both. So I encourage Urbana, you know, to do the same, so we look forward to that. Lastly, I just wanted to mention Derek Liebert, Andy Rousseau and I attended Cara Dudik-Mizel's Urban Planning Class. She took on a semester of teaching at the U of I in urban planning and their final project was Del Coleman Park. So we got to see three wonderful presentations from us, essentially senior class, I believe they're seniors. Can imagine the maturity, the seriousness, every group project was very thorough, demographics, rich information. Each group had an interesting concept and I think it met all of our sort of pre-vision of what we could see actually happening. Obviously, one of the things we need to happen is more development in that area. And so that was sort of the obvious part that they also helped with, what would make reasonable street accommodations. But certainly, it's an island right now and we'd have to see more development in that section of Urbana to see that park come together. But I see it as a tool that we could now use, that we could go out and begin talking with developers that may not be aware that we have a, you know, I'm sure most people don't know. We have an amazing, almost 30-acre park right there, ready to accept and absorb whatever development would come around it. So it could be a very attractive zone, we know that it's in the enterprise zone, you know, to encourage development there. And some tax abatement for new, new housing and residence, so we're excited about that, just the message. You know, it's something you sort of think about, but then when you see a group, a couple of groups come in and start putting ideas to physically bring it together, boy, it really gets exciting. And we're, we look forward to that. I can't answer any other questions if there's anything in the report or otherwise.
I'm just curious, does the, the city boundary come up to that park now? You say it's in the enterprise zone, but.
It's, it's, it, we've in and out, I'd have to pull up the map.
Yeah, okay.
Cara, do you have a recollection of that boundary? I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you know, we'd certainly have you answer it.
So right now, it's outside of the city boundaries, but it is within that sort of planning zone, that extraterritorial jurisdiction. And so it's like considered, but it's not currently within the city boundaries.
That's kind of what I thought, but, okay, thanks.
So again, look, looks bright for the future and knowing that we don't need to necessarily worry about thinking of open space in that area. Which shouldn't relieve us from other concerns of other areas of need, but having a park that we can grow into is, is good news. That's all I had.
Thanks very much. Moving on to the President's Report, not a whole lot to report on in terms of upcoming meetings. We normally do not have a study session in January and this is likely to be that case. And then January 10 is the date for the regular board meeting. Semi-annual review of past executive session minutes and recordings, always a fun thing. And action to release past executive session minutes or destroy recordings. So there will undoubtedly be other things on the agenda than just that, but that'll get us started. And other than that, I, there is likely to be a TIF and enterprise zone meeting at some point. That Tim and I would be attending, but we don't yet have a date for that, so. Moving on to liaison reports, the finance study group last met on the second of December, which was prior to our study session even. I'm not sure there's a whole. I'm not sure there's a whole lot to add that hasn't been either in our, in the study session or else on the agenda tonight. I mean, we've already talked about the TIF two retirement, the Crystal Lake Park wall status and capital projects. So I think all the things that we discussed there have been pretty well covered. And we are planning to meet again on January 13, so just after our regular meeting next month. UPD Policy Study Group.
We met on November 30. I mean, discussed topics such as e-bikes, social media usage, public filming, legal symposium updates, and adding Juneteenth is an official holiday for the Urbana Park District. And there's a memo about this later on in the agenda.
Right. So there's action to be taken later on resulting out of that. Any questions? Moving on to Parks Foundation, Roger.
We met yesterday. We heard the news that the foundation has, is transferring another 356,088, mostly Health and Wellness. So this is in addition to the 1.1 million that they have already transferred this year. So kudos to them and kudos to, to people in Urbana who have given so much for these projects. There was extensive discussion about the Vincent Green Scholarship Fund, how to disperse that and how, at the same time, to preserve a, a certain balance. I think that they have some work to do in, in defining that. Kelsey discussed Prairie Prairie fundraising and some ideas that go along with that. The Fall Appeal. And then Steve Ruggs, who's been fundraising chair for a good long time, steps down. And that's, that's, that's going to be a tough transition. That's it.
Thank you, Roger. And lastly, then, UPDEC Planning Study Group, I gather, has not met, so there's.
Correct. But I'm assuming that we'll meet sooner than later.
Yes, likely in the new year.
Okay, that takes us on to old business. We've already taken care of item A. And item B is action on any old business removed from the consent agenda, and there was none. So we can move on to new business. Action to approve ordinance 2022-07, abating the levy of property taxes related to one of our bond series.
Correct. Laura, did you have anything else to add to that on the abatement?
I, I really don't. I think he was.
Very straightforward.
Gratefully, he filled in those blanks. So unless anybody has any questions.
I move to approve ordinance 2022-07, abating the levy of property taxes on Urbana Park District General Obligation Park Bonds Alternative Revenue Source Series 2019A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. Item B, review and accept the annual priority projects report to, to the Parks Foundation.
As you know, one of our annual actions is to provide a report to the board, usually in December, to outline sort of our capital process, high priority projects and needs throughout the district. I think the original intent of that report was then that the board would graciously forward it on to the Urbana Parks Foundation to give them a snapshot of what our needs in the upcoming year are. We appreciate that effort. And Derek's going to walk us through the highlights of that report.
Sure. Yes, this report is probably familiar to you all. It's similar to the last couple of years. It's been reformatted to align with our strategic plan and our four pillars. We worked with Kelsey to identify accomplishments for the year. In addition to the figures that Roger just shared with the Health and Wells Campaign, they raised approximately $138,000 for improvements at Blair Park Tennis. And so just, just wonderful work this year. Also, of course, life on the prairie, the new Bison Sculpture at Meadowbrook Park came through the foundation. As far as projects and priorities go, I'll just highlight the updates and changes from previous years. On Health and Wellness, we're focusing now on sponsorship. We, we feel like we've drawn a close to our, our campaign for capital contributions. We want to begin focusing on sponsorship, corporate sponsorship in particular. So we identified a goal of approximately $20,000 and we're looking forward in the coming year to, to develop that program further. For placemaking, we dropped out of the Blair.
What is the sponsorship for? Building costs, naming things?
Operating and programming.
What's that?
Operating and programming.
Okay. Does that number seem low, 20,000? It does to me. Sorry.
I, I think initially, we were trying to hit, hit a goal we know we can, can get to.
Okay.
At, at that 20,000, we're looking at roughly 10 corporate sponsors at 2,000 apiece.
Okay.
Which is like a banner-type program.
Okay.
You'll see, you see them in a lot of the gyms.
Okay. That, that's helpful.
There'll be other avenues for other opportunities from other, maybe larger corporations, whether it's scholarship money or other things. But this is kind of our low-level programming slash operating.
Okay.
Thank you, Corky. On placemaking, we removed the, the tennis goal, and now we're focusing solely on the rehab. This number is an updated construction estimate based upon actual construction takeoffs that were provided by a local construction management group we work with. And we're right now talking with potential donor about, about an opportunity there. Public art and Meadowbrook Park remain the same. And then on Do You Belong Here?, the goal remains the same, $20,000 annually, and new scholarship is our goal there. And finally, in Trails and Connectivity, previously, it was focused more on the Kickflip Rail Trail with, I suppose I would say optimism that, that there could be some state funds coming to the, the KRT project. We wanted to focus again on Crystal Lake Park. And so we have two high priority trail projects there. The Turkey Trot Path, which would make the, the Turkey Trout Race universally accessible throughout its route. And then the West Woods Loop Path, which is another potential donor project that we've been discussing. This would be the path that's up near the labyrinth in the West Woods area, close to the Carl campus. So those are our recommendations for the coming year to focus on, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. If you have suggested amendments or changes, we'd be happy to entertain those as well.
I just wanted to add, I know we've been talking at the foundation level, you know, sort of how does that group want to organize their efforts? Certainly, this kind of reporting, we think, is important, kind of transfers what we see as high priority needs to that group. But we also know at some point, taking on their own sort of strategic initiatives to respond to these and kind of move us away from what I keep calling like lurching from campaign to campaign. We still need help in all these areas. So in some ways and levels, things don't change. But we're trying to get kind of a different, maybe, energy level, focus and direction. So that, you know, whatever the foundation sees as our needs, they take the initiative and sort of drive that. So we're not being critical, but we just see, I guess my point is, this report could change to relate to that. But we still want to make sure they get some base level of, you know, what are our needs in that 12-month window that they should be aware of and focus. And that's probably the challenge most park districts and foundations work with, is how do you transfer that information? Get the critical needs out there, but make sure that's what people want to and can fundraise for, if you know what I mean. So for example, if somebody had any other special, hey, I don't know about this, but I could get this. Or I know somebody, or I could apply for, you know, a third-party grant, that's what we're talking about, if that level of, you know, interest. If it doesn't occur, certainly, we can continue this and direct, but we're really trying to focus a little more on that. So I would expect probably the next year, we'll see this report. But maybe that'll change as, as our foundation sort of matures and takes on new, new efforts.
Tim, I'd also mention that, you know, it's working that way. The goal previously for the tennis courts at, at Blair Park was one of our goals in the report last year. And since that time, we, we've worked to, they've worked to raise this money to support. Prior to that, we'd planned on just doing crack repair, but we were able to do a much more comprehensive repair as a result of their generosity.
And it took that, you know, special person that had that spark, you know, from the foundation to ignite that, get every other person on board. And then we went out into the community and listed other helpers. So that, good, good example, Derek, of, you know, how we can see that a little more organic and probably a little more impactful on what we need.
I have some questions, if you have questions on. So 535,000 for pavilion rehab. We're working with a donor on the total cost of that or partial?
We've presented the entire cost to him, and that includes bid alternates as well. His, his inquiry was whether the park district would have anything that they could contribute above and beyond that. I don't think we've had a chance to respond to that inquiry yet. However, you know, in our mind, the, the design fee, to take it from current conceptual design through construction documents and construction supervision would be something that we would certainly be able to entertain. And we'd like to find out more about what his, his interests are.
Well, that's exciting.
It is exciting. Yeah.
A single project funded by a single donor. That's, that's great. And then it just seemed, I love trails, but it's almost a million dollars' worth of pavement, right? Which I, so, I don't know. It's just interesting. I, I guess, what's the timeline on the Trails and Connectivity for Crystal Lake Park? And how does this, I mean, I absolutely understand the ADA accessibility, but how does this also connect with the one-way road study? And I guess when we talked about that in the beginning, we talked about trying not to spend lots of funds. And maybe this is the alternate to that in laying new concrete or pavement or whatever we're going to do for the trail.
But go ahead. I have a few comments too.
Sure. So, so the, the, the one-way road would not be reflected in these improvements. These, these are, these are essentially other, yeah, networks. Part of it, part of what would be done with the Turkey Trot Path is replacing the asphalt path that goes from the water feature to the Lake House Bridge and then extending beyond Past Cannonball Hill to Broadway Avenue. And that's the orange path that's shown kind of along the saline. So that, that's, that's the Turkey Trot Path. So partial repair and replacement of asphalt and then partial new trail. The Turk, the, the, the West Woods Path is the loop trail that's over near the Carl Campus. And portions of that are in place today. The, the, the section that goes up along Kohler Avenue is, is in place today. And the portion that comes off of the, something that's called the triangle over towards the Park Road is in place. That portion is, is, would need to be replaced, and the portions would be new. So they, they both reflect some new construction and some repairing of existing.
I would add too, Meredith, that staff's really not confident that these would be projects that would probably be selected for grant awards. You know, they're essentially small loops. They don't really create a destination. It may be more suited for talking with Carl and hoping that they would see this. So if this was a priority, we'd have the information, hey, our board has tagged this as a high priority. We'd love to get our foundation involved, but could be that third-party donor that might help us. You know, typically, your AusLad or I, ITAP project, AusLad might have some trail in it, ITAP would have more, but those are a little more comprehensive, like the one-way road, those sort of bigger transportation. These short circle loops just tend to not qualify. So we've got to find another way. And they're, they are expensive, and they would eat up most of our annual capital. So if we could find others to help us with those, that, that's some of the thinking there too. So we'd love to share this report. You know, one of our stops, we'll be visiting with Carl again. Hey, this is still a priority. It's on the top of our list. We'd share the benefits of what we think would benefit, you know, that highly intensive area right next to their campus, where their investment would make a big difference and probably, you know, make a big impression and improvement to the park. So it's not necessarily competing with our annual capital, but hopefully outside gifts to attract. That's at least one strategy we're trying to apply. And it's frustrating. I wish we could roll into a grant app, but I, again, I don't think we'd be very successful. It doesn't bring us new customers or get us, you know, one place to another. So. And probably the other bike path grant is small, you know, I think it's 50,000, I think around there, is the typical award level, 250 and 100. So again, it wouldn't be able to address, you know, some of those grants. So we are trying to just get it out there and see who might be attracted or who might be able to help us.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
I would move to accept and forward the 2023 Annual Priority Projects Report to the Urbana Parks Foundation.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's do a roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. Next up is action to accept the 2023 Annual Meeting Calendar. Don't think there's anything controversial here, but it's just, it's establishing a baseline calendar for the year.
Just wanted to note, if you didn't, usually often UPDEC meeting, which is on the third, third page, often the November meeting is moved. You'll notice just the way the calendar fell, we wouldn't directly conflict with the Thanksgiving week. So there was no change, which is often typical to move it up a week to avoid the Thanksgiving week.
I move to accept the 2023 Annual Meeting Calendar for regular board meetings, study sessions, joint meetings and UPDEC meetings.
Second.
That's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Do a roll call, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. And that brings us to item D, the 2022 ADA Transition Plan Updates.
Kara's here to join us for the update, anything that Planning Operations has to add.
I'm happy to be here again. I've been giving this sort of annual update and look back since 2015. And I think it's kind of nice to always bring accessibility in our ADA Transition Plan to the forefront and into the board once a year. This memo is a little bit different than past years. It mostly talks about our process, working with Jennifer Skolsky of Skolsky Consulting. She's been really wonderful to work with so far. And this is a new, complete evaluation of all of our parks and facilities, so all of the built environment that we take care of. But also a review of our policies and our programs and different procedures, such as, you know, when a customer, customer comes in and, you know, we're registering them for something. So it's really both sides, the actual physical barriers and also barriers that involve our procedures as well. I noted within the memo that this new accessibility assessment noted 442 deficiencies in our system, which definitely can seem like a big number. But when this was done 10 years ago, that number was 745. And so I think, and that's with us having added this facility and the outdoor pool and a whole variety of other amenities along the way. So I do think that we've made great progress with those numbers. I also noted that when I talked to Jennifer last week ahead of writing this memo, she really thought that compared to our peer agencies, we are doing a good job of planning and implementing. Like, we have a group of staff that are constantly working on things related to this, and we're budgeting them in and we're actually making progress as opposed to, you know, maybe other agencies who are not sure where to start or maybe have a little bit more of a hands-off approach, like working with contractors or something like that. We really internalize it as a staff group. On the second page of the memo, Jennifer gave me a snapshot of what our most common deficiencies are across the district. And I think this is really helpful to see maybe where we can make the most impact. And some of them can be kind of perplexing too, like what, what do these things actually mean? So I thought maybe I could just touch on a few and, before I finish up the rest of the memo. So you can see our first and our highest number of deficiencies is adjust door opening force. And so what that means is it should take less than five pounds of force for someone to push open a door. And that either involves adjusting the. And that either involves, um, adjusting the closers or replacing the closers. So even though there's a lot of them and we, um, you know, could go facility by facility to adjust what we have, um, they are a fairly small cost.
I'm, I'm just curious, uh, has there been a change in the standard or, or were most of these already on the list from the previous report?
It's interesting you ask that because they were on the list. We thought we addressed them and they showed up on the list again. So it turns out that just replacing the door closer, like we did it, uh, all the Nature Center ones one year and all the Phillips Recreation Center ones another year, that replacing it doesn't mean that it's automatically going to be within that range. Uh, it still takes some adjustment and some review.
Several of these we might be able to adjust into compliance. Some may require replacement.
Yeah.
Um, the twenty-three below that provide picnic units with mobility features. Um, so we have some picnic tables which have sort of an extended top where someone could roll underneath. That's only half of the equation. Another part of the equation is making sure that it's along an accessible route and some of our parks just don't have a lot of sidewalk infrastructure. Or you may have noticed that Blair, north of the Pavilion, there's kind of a little bump out and so along the path, that picnic table is on a, a concrete pad, which allows it to be fully accessible. So that's, um, at least twenty percent of the picnic tables and the benches within any given park should be accessible. Um, modifying existing pathway is usually the slopes are too steep, whether that's the running slope or the cross slope. Um, you'll see later on, there's also another, um, mention of paths. Oh, uh, correct changes in level or openings for accessible route. So any change in level that's, um, greater than a quarter of an inch or a half inch beveled is actually an impediment to the accessible route. So there's, you know, not a lot of space for error there. I don't want to bore you with all of these. Are there any specific ones that the board may have questions on or would like further details? You can see a lot of them are adjustments or maybe things being slightly off, especially when it comes to restrooms or doors or things like that. Um, but like I mentioned earlier, in addition to those physical barriers, Jennifer has also reviewed our programs, policies, and procedures, um, for different opportunities. Uh, and I think that one interesting example she told me about when we talked last week was the suggestion for a portable assisted listening system. And so this isn't necessarily a physical barrier, but it will, um, help with creating more inclusive programs. And so the example I used here was say you have a, a program participant on a nature hike who needs a little bit of extra help hearing. Um, so whoever's giving the tour, maybe it's Savannah or Chelsea, they're wearing a microphone and then the participant is wearing headphones. And so instead of someone, um, you know, maybe having to talk too loud in, in a sensitive area or something like that, you can really, uh, create a more inclusive environment by having some of these technologies or interventions that just slightly alter the way that we do things. Um, another thing that will come out of this work with Jennifer Skolsky is some staff training. And I think what's really exciting about this staff training is that it's not another, um, ADA 101 course where we kind of get a, a knowledge of what the requirements are, but they're more guided. So for example, you know, Andy and Derek and I could take one of the guided courses that Jennifer takes us out to a park and helps us measure some of these things and point these things out in the field so we can actually understand them, as opposed to someone just telling us what's wrong and, and putting in a document. Maybe we can catch some of these things as we're actually in the construction phase. Um, so in conclusion, we should have the final reports and then the actual interactive database within this next year to start working towards, um, implementing and not only creating like ADA accessible spaces, but also universally designed spaces that just make it better for everyone to be in our parks and facilities.
Good information.
How far into 2023 are you expecting the, the final product?
Um, I don't know for sure, but we've seen all of the draft reports, so it's all written up as far as what the barriers, the physical barriers are. So now she'll be working on the report of our policies and procedures, which she said is like fifty or sixty pages. Um, and so then we would be able to start staff training and things like that in the spring. So my best guess would be late spring.
Any other questions for Kara?
I just want to add, I, I've, I've found Jennifer Skolsky to be just such a resource. Uh, she's very accessible and, uh, no pun intended, uh, when we have questions and, uh, with, with, with plan review as well. Uh, she's helped us look at the planning and operations facility and, and catch some things before they became a problem in construction. She did the same thing with Blair Park, uh, and, uh, I think she's someone who really understands parks and recreation and, and, and obviously places a high priority in accessibility. So, uh, we're, it's, it's more than just this report. She's gonna be, uh, available to us, uh, moving forward throughout projects and, uh, just a real asset to the district.
We see a, a partnership sort of approach, you know, instead of, well, here's your, all the things you did wrong and cry and foul, sort of, how do we change the world, make it better? So that's, that's wonderful to work in an environment like that with those outcomes.
Okay. Uh, no action required, as I gather. Um, so, thank you, Kara.
Thank you.
Yes, you, Kara.
And, uh, moving on then to item E, Personnel Policy Manual Ordinance 2022-09.
Alex Ivanova is with us right behind the screen. She's gonna walk us through this information and answer any questions. Thank you, Alex, for being here and we'll turn it over to you.
Hi, everyone. I'm sorry I couldn't be there personally, but I caught whatever is going around, so I hope that the rest of you are, oh, well. Um, I just have a few quick legal updates, um, that are going to affect our personnel manual and then a separate small update to the safety manual. So the, um, first main update is going to change, um, section three point one oh of the personnel manual. That's an update to the One Day Rest in Seven Act, um, and that modifies rest provisions and makes changes to meal break requirements. And so currently, um, we require at least twenty-four consecutive hours of rest between, sorry, um, in every calendar week. And the amendment is that calendar week is removed and starting January first of the new year, the, uh, employees must receive twenty-four consecutive hours of rest in every, um, consecutive seven-day period. Also currently unpaid meal breaks of at least twenty minutes are required by the end of the fifth hour of work. And now if you work over seven and a half hours in a day, you can actually take an additional twenty-minute unpaid meal break, uh, for every four and a half hours worked. And so, uh, those are legally required for us, um, signed by the governor over the summer for January first. So we just need to update our personnel policy to reflect those changes. And are there any questions about that before we move on to the next, um, personnel policy update? Okay. Uh, the next update is to the Family Belief Agreement Leave Act, and that is, um, it's very closely tied to, um, FMLA, which is the Family Medical Leave Act. Uh, but this is more to do with, um, kind of reproductive issues. So it requires, um, employer, starting on January first, provide unpaid leave for absences resulting from a pregnancy loss, a successful IDF treatment, a failed adoption, um, a failed surrogacy, or a diagnosis that, um, otherwise would impact pregnancy. And much like FMLA, this, um, employers who have fifty or more people, an employee who has worked twelve hundred and fifty or more hours, you know, those are the folks that are qualified. Um, so it's not, um, not everyone qualifies. But much like FMLA, we're also recommending that at the Park District, um, an employee would be able to use, uh, tap into their acute illness bank because the law requires it to be, um, you know, two weeks of unpaid time. Um, but since we've always, you know, had this sick leave bank for, you know, more serious absences that FMLA would qualify for, um, you know, after talking with the Board Policy Committee and, um, you know, talking amongst our staff group, it just seemed like it was the right thing to do to, you know, consider extending, um, this new FMLA, um, IDB into punitive loans too if someone qualifies. Are there any questions about that? Okay. The next, um, topic that we discussed was, um, actually adding Juneteenth as an observed holiday at the Park District. So we, uh, spoke to Champagne Park District, Champagne Forest Preserve Board Policy Committee and kind of, um, you know, thought about what the Park District represented as a, you know, you belong to your agency and also thought a lot about what our, um, compensation consultant, WHR, has been telling us with, you know, trying to find, um, you know, more ways to be attractive to employees, um, through benefits and, you know, adding an inclusive holiday and, um, extending our, um, leave policies would be beneficial to that. Uh, so we're recommending that we, um, starting in 2023 to actually add Juneteenth as a, um, district holiday. And doing such, since we do have a paid leave bank, um, and we do use paid leave for holidays, uh, we would recommend that we actually add eight more hours of paid leave to, uh, staff's accrual. So that would look like an extra, um, an extra eight hours in May, um, since, um, we want to be, you know, prepared with those hours, uh, for June. And are there any questions on that topic before we move on? I think that's actually it for the Personnel Policy Manual Updates that are recommended effective January first. So I'll, um, stop here in case someone has questions before moving on to the Safety Manual Updates.
I'm not seeing any questions at this point.
Probably want to approve that though, right? Or take it to vote?
Right, so, um, I move, uh, to accept and approve the revisions to the Personnel Policy Manual effective January first, 2023.
Second.
Okay, I, I think Meredith was-
Roger.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
I was first. Uh, that's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Uh, hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. So now we're onto the Safety Manual Ordinance.
Okay, great, thanks so much. Um, this is a even more straightforward, um, recommendation. Um, traditionally, the Safety Manual comes to the board, um, in December for kind of the annual, um, update. And this year, we just have, um, some pretty straightforward updates having to do with position titles, names, and phone numbers. The main one is, um, now the position's called Finance Manager that Laura Workut, um, has taken place of and, you know, new phone numbers, our crisis management plan has to be, had to be updated, um, just to reflect those changes. And that's pretty much the main difference, just because the, so it previously used to be Business Manager and, I mean, it's littered throughout the entire manual just because, you know, the business office has such a, um, has such a kind of oversight of, you know, incident reports as they relate to insurance and, um, liability. So, um, this is just kind of an example that you'll see in the memo or the ordinance of where, you know, where it's updated in the Crisis Management Plan, but, um, that actual title is, um, updated throughout, uh, the manual in, I mean, probably at least thirty places. Um, but that's all. It's just to kind of keep us updated for the new year and making sure that the manual's updated for 2023. And any questions at all about the Safety Manual?
So what is needed here is for us to approve revisions to the Safety Manual, which is basically this, this table that's-
Correct.
Okay. I will, I will say it seems a little odd to, um, have the entire board approving a table of phone numbers and, and titles like this. I mean, I, it, it seems, uh, a, a, a little bit, uh, getting down in the minutia for the, to the board to actually have to do that. I mean, somebody's-
Sure.
We, we're- Leaves, leaves, leaves the position and, and they come in and end up with a different phone number.
Sure.
That-
Often, more often, we'll have a little more substantial changes, obviously in this go-round. And one of Alex's goals is to try to provide timely and, let's say, maybe annual reviews or as things change. This is probably the level of reflection of changes, but as far as procedures and reviewing with the study group and bringing it to the board is, is-
From my perspective, it seems like what we ought to be doing is approving for, for the Safety Manual, that there be such a communications plan.
Sure.
But that that be the responsibility of the executive director to, to, to maintain that, uh, over time, rather than bothering you to come to us to, to do all this.
However, the board would like to. That's typically how we've done it. Obviously, these are smaller, you know, let's say, perfunctory type issues.
Well, I mean, there, there are aspects of the Safety Manual that is absolutely. It, it seems to me that that's board policy level stuff. This not so much. I mean, this is administrative detail.
Be reasonable to have the study group determine if it's substantive and should be revisited or shared with the board or, or, you know, is it, we, we just don't want to assume I'm doing it and we just made changes. And if there's questions, we're reporting after the fact.
Well, I'm doing all the talking for the board here, but I-
We're not saying anything because we agree with you.
No, I think that, I think that it's fine that that could be something that, you know, just brought up to the, the policy group or whatever.
Yeah.
That would certainly meet our staff needs, just to have some sort of, you know, measure of, is it substantial that the board should review? Or is it matter of literally, you know, a, a position or a title change or a phone number type of, you know, just carry that forward. Could be directed by the policy study group.
Right. And, and again, to me, the policies, to go in the Safety Manual, I ought to be, there is a communications plan that, that is maintained and-
Right.
Yeah.
Can I, can we clarify, the Safety Manual is a piece of the Policy Manual, which is why historically-
Alex, can you give us an overview of each of those reports, what their purpose are and how we manage them?
Because, I mean, the ordinance is about the policy-
Yeah, this, sorry, um, go ahead.
Well, the ordinance is about the Policy Manual, but then we're referencing the Safety Manual. So I think it's important to make that distinction or the three pieces.
There's actually two ordinances, um, that are separate, to update each one separately.
Which we've already done one.
Okay, I'm just, what am I looking for?
E is the policy manual.
I don't know.
F is the Safety Manual.
That's odd.
Yeah, but-
That's a good point.
Sorry, I'm looking at the actual ordinance and it doesn't, like, it's, maybe it's because it's printed on exhibit eight, it's on the bar. As opposed to what's in the meeting agenda.
Alex, I think that, yeah, I think the question is both nine and ten are labeled as ordinance revising Personnel Policy Manual. But nine is the Policy Manual and ten is the Safety Manual. And I think the question is, is the Safety Manual part of the Personnel Manual?
Right.
Is what they're trying, I think what they're trying to ask.
It is not.
So it's maybe mislabeled on this ordinance.
That should say Safety Manual. So I think the issue is, I, you know, I, I agree with Michael that this shouldn't, you know, administrative things shouldn't, but the only problem is that, you know, like, emergency action plans are a good example of things that, you know, contact information changes and it would never go to the board because they're procedural and they stay out of the Safety Manual for that reason. But there are a lot of things in the Safety Manual that maybe need to be taken out that are procedural and this way would have to, you know, this would happen again.
That would be another way to do it.
Separate out different things, yep.
So the ordinance.
Something we can work towards for next December's meeting and have it all kind of ready and separated for that.
So Ordinance twenty, twenty-two-ten should say Ordinance Revising Safety Manual?
Yep.
That's what it should say, yes.
So I'm a little confused. Are we tabling this until December where we're pulling it out? Or we need to take action on the, sorry, it is December.
It is December. And we would prefer action.
Yeah, we may as well take action on it, I think.
Might as well.
Yeah.
And we can work on separating any extraneous information, revising the two manuals or working with the Policy Committee in any way that they'd recommend to bring in clarity and simplicity.
I move to accept and approve the revisions to the Safety Manual effective January first, 2023.
Second.
That's moved in second. And is there any further discussion on the point? Hearing none, do a roll call, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for attending remotely.
Now, go get some rest.
Thank you, Alex.
Hi, Alex, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good night, have a good night.
Okay.
That moves us on to the Brown Fund Principal Discussion.
Great. Yeah, well, I wanted to provide a little bit of background and then staff wanted to share some of the visuals that we have. But we've been working with the Finance Study Group on a need of the district that we've had for quite some time. If you remember, probably over a decade ago, we did a master plan for Meadowbrook Park for the interpretation and sort of wayfinding overview of the entire park. In that report, when we worked with Rhodes Group, they identified a few of the key kiosk areas throughout Meadowbrook Park that were recommended that we actually plan and install something for the visitor experience. So as people come to a very large park, how do they know where they are? How do they know that this giant park, there's a series of gardens, natural areas, sculptures, historic buildings, you know, a variety of infrastructure and places. We do programs and events. So what was recommended in that report is that we have a few key areas that we sort of tell the story. Certainly, it's a planned approach we could take to other large parks like Crystal Lake Park or future parks, you know, where we would do similar interpretation. But we started with Meadowbrook because we do a lot of public education at that site. One of the items is, that has been recommended in that report and that we just have struggled with finding a way to afford it, because while it's important and it would improve the visitor experience, it's not like replacing a pathway or a bridge or something that's deteriorating, you know, that would, you know, potentially be a safety issue. So as we continue to look at, how could we fund that? If you recall, a few years ago, we received a nice gift from Dick and Winona Brown. They were Olivier Clark Lindsay, staff worked with them in their interest to provide a life and gift to the district. It was geared toward supporting the art and cultural aspects of Meadowbrook Park. The concept of the gift was that ideally the principal would grow interest and that the interest would be returned on an annual basis and improvements could be made. But in their gift, we also discussed, hey, there could be some big, bigger ticket type things that the district may want to do. And they were very open to that idea of, if the Board would approve additional or some other level of, of spending out of that fund, maybe of the principal, they would support that. And the whole trust was placed in the Board, that they would know when that's a good idea and perhaps maybe when that wasn't a good idea. So one of the topics that we've continued to share is the need to get something in the Sculpture Garden that tells the story of why we have art there, to recognize the donors and create that wayfinding node in that portion of the park. So tonight, what we want to do is review the designs that we have. And we're seeking approval to spend a portion of that principal, which would typically be over the annual interest, is indicated in memo, the fund is over six hundred thousand dollars, it's about six hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. So, you know, there's certainly ample money. The amount that we've targeted is around sixty-five thousand, that's based on the estimates. Certainly, we could get more information if we need to go to a bid situation. But we wanted to review a couple of items that we highly recommend that we consider spending and do, doing now. The alternative is, we wouldn't probably be able to do these and it would put that in some sort of indefinite situation. And we haven't been successful yet to attract a separate donor that would, you know, presumably take this on. So again, we, as staff looked at it, we thought, well, we, we do have a fund, it is a flexible fund, if the Board approved that, or recognized that this would be a, you know, just reason to spend into the principal, certainly, we would seek that from the Board. So we wanted to review the designs. And our hope is that this could be installed and celebrated as part of our Jazz Walk event, you know, later in September of 2023, as the closing effort of the Wondell Sculpture Garden twenty-fifth anniversary. So it's sort of a way we can make a gift to ourself that would certainly inform the visitor, recognize donor, and we believe help us attract more gifts by being able to recognize people in a very high style way that looks very attractive. And again, we, right now, we have a, basically a wooden sign out in the park. I think it's the second or third sign over the many years, the twenty-five years we've been operating there. You know, it doesn't look good, it's incomplete, there's names that are missing. So it's really an opportunity for us to upgrade, get everybody recognized, and have a nice area that we could also bring classes or individuals out, talk about art, or certainly create a rest spot, places for people to sit within the garden. So I'll pause with that, Derek's going to walk us through all the design aspects, answer any questions. We can come back to more specifics on what we're proposing to do or answer any new questions you may have.
Okay, so this is the, we're calling the interpretive seating plaza. It's basically, we often, it's called the half circle. This is the concept we're looking at most closely at this point. At one point earlier, we're considering doing some cut stone, but as we looked at this more closely, we realized that this would be a real, a real challenge. So this would be decorative concrete, somewhat of what we've done with some of our other decorative concrete that mimics a natural stone with some limestone seating blocks. These are under drains that would help to take water away from the site. We're proposing that there be an interpretive sign here. Again, this is an earlier plan that needs to be updated with ratios assistance pending support of the Board moving forward. And, and this, this would actually become an accessible seating spot rather than having a future sign there. So this would tell the story of the Sculpture Garden. It'd also have a sign, a, a map for the park oriented in North fashion and a you're here icon. Currently, right across the path, there's another one. In terms of where this would be located, this is the location right here. It's at the intersection of the Hickman Wildflower Walk and the Wondell Sculpture Garden Loop. There's a piece of sculpture here today, a piece of sculpture here today, one here today. And we anticipate there'll be one here this spring as part of the twenty-fifth. And so it's a great place to tell the story of the Wondell Sculpture Garden surrounded by sculpture. The existing map sign here would be replaced by the one that'd be located here in the half circle. So that's, that's one of the two projects that we're proposing. The other is to do some sculpture standards. And those would look something like this. This is a design that Rasha worked with us on. This is Core Ten or Weathered Steel, somewhat to what we've done with the Gateway at Meadowbrook and also Bucy Woods, a watercut graphic of, of grass that would be sort of a, a theme that we'd pick up elsewhere in the park. And then an infographic, which would be a high-pressure laminate panel, essentially an interpretive panel, some of the interpretive signs we have elsewhere. This would be something that we could remove and replace as sculpture gets updated in the park. And the concrete base, this is an application we saw done at the Peoria Park District, their sculpture program, and it, and it works quite well. So those, this would be the other application of the Brown Fund that we'd, we'd recommend to you all tonight. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
We have some estimated cost, obviously, once we would get, if we could seek, get permission tonight to move forward with the project, we'll get everything updated and come back with cost. It could be, depending on the cost, we wouldn't need to bid, we could have the Director approve it. So we have some options there. But again, they're high priority needs, but they don't raise to the element where we would pass it on to the Foundation for something to fundraise for. We've had casual conversations with donors. This wasn't something that has at least caught attention yet, not saying we couldn't go out and try to find somebody. But we just think that the critical need to get some basic infrastructure in the park is really critical. And we believe if you read the, you know, gift agreement, it would certainly fit that level and the quality and the intent, I think, by the, you know, according to the gift agreement. And it is unlikely something we would continue to come back every time we have a need. Obviously, it doesn't help any of us if our gift fund is gone. Certainly, we could spend it probably within a year and have lots of nice things. But the idea is, what's really important? What are we going to struggle with? What could we use that fund for in a flexible way to get in place that would really, again, improve the visitor experience, recognize donors, and help people wayfind through the, throughout the park and, and that, and the garden area?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So with, I really like these, the, the standards, the identification signs.
Yes.
My question is, how permanent are they? Because, right, like, I understand that, like, being able to change the infographic on the top is, is good, right? Like, if the sculpture changes. But, you know, if we get seven of these or whatever and put them around the park, does that limit where we can put sculptures in the park in the future?
It does not. Derek, do you want to talk about the changeability of the, the panel? Presumably, if it's a permanent piece, there would be a permanent marker and very little change would occur other than weathering.
This concrete base would actually, you know, it's, it's being sure plopped in the ground, it, it would be, and we would excavate it embedded in the ground. But it wouldn't be so big that we couldn't dig it up and remove it. But it would be big enough where it'd be difficult for somebody to come by and do it easily.
Right.
So the intent is that we would, we would use these elsewhere. In fact, of the, there's currently forty-one of these that we have anticipated for Meadowbrook Park. Of those, we, we think maybe eight or ten of them, at the end of this program, could go to some of the permanently owned sculpture elsewhere in the district. We have, you know, some pieces at Carl Park, we have some pieces at Crystal Lake Park, we have a new one that we brought to Phillips. Those ones we would pay for out of a different fund in the Brown Fund, because the Brown Fund is dedicated for Meadowbrook Park. So it would be, be very intentional that a portion of these would be paid for out of a separate fund for reuse and replacement elsewhere. We think it's important that we have some flexibility with the sculpture program. We know people like to see new art, and so we don't want to commit to something that's stuck in one location forever.
Good question.
It's twenty-two thousand for how many?
Forty, forty-one.
Really reasonable. Right, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
We agree, although when we look at our annual capital, you know how challenging that list is. It just has never made the list. That was my, our whole burly.
But this gift is a perfect use of those funds.
I mean, staff, staff occurs with that.
I think this looks fantastic.
We like the design. We spent a lot of time in looking at other places, what would fit our character, what kind of materials would work best for us. And again, it's sort of, how do we elevate our experience just to that next level? You know, if we're in the top ten best in the Midwest or the, around the country, you know, we, we believe there's some need for that. You know, could you continue to use a wooden four-by-four post or, you know, a yard sign? Certainly, you could, you could do those things. And we, we certainly use yard signs, future sculptures coming to let people know it's not a banquet hole. So we'd still rely on those. And other parks might have a wooden post, you know, depending on our ability. But we think for at least the Meadowbrook experience, this would be a good direction. And as Derek indicated, we could purchase additional ones from other funds and be able to track which, you know, go to Meadowbrook and which are other.
And so in that, in that, this is kind of like a design question. So like, in that degree, like, would you have a, would you like maintain the, the, the grass graphic? Or would you have like a different graphic for like the different parks? Or would you have like the, or is like, is that a space for like the Park District logo?
Well, I think we thought custom, the concept was customizing it to get it to look like Meadowbrook. So we think the, you know, the prairie grass graphic would speak well, probably in any park it could be used, but we certainly could mix it up at another site. You could, you know, have the name of the park or the Park District logo. But we sort of, you know, what do people like and what do they, probably natural materials and things that are more nature-based and organic seem to generally resonate.
I really like this, just not, because it's like, it's, it like, there's a lot of ways to give recognition to like the artists.
Right.
But in this way, this like forces recognition, because like the standard is like an object that it's going to draw attention as much as the statue, right? So then, I think that's like really important, because, right, the previous standards are, are there, but like, if, if you're not looking for them, you literally could miss them.
So that's an excellent point, and I bet Jennifer Skolski would agree with that. Is it user-friendly? Is it accessible? Does it meet standards? I'm not so sure. The small post you have to bend over and try to read, you know, small letters, really, obviously, you can see how that would be more easy to view for the, so again, it's about the visitor experience. And simply put it, classes our act up. And I think it elevates us to another level, takes on our serious role. And so the materials in the seating area would reflect these kind of materials also, so that as we build this vocabulary at Meadowbrook, things gel and are, you know, made of the same materials. And over time, will serve us, you know, hopefully, well. The seating are their large block, we've used those in other parks and also at Meadowbrook. So we have, you know, familiarity with those materials. So as people see, it's also a cue, like, oh, there's information or a seating or a, so there's visual cues and clues that, that go along with that. So it's both overt, intent, you know, intensely designed, and also there's a subtle, you know, softer side.
So I guess my follow-up question is, like, right, so we have these, these funds and they're available to use, like, and I see that, like, right, there's a big focus on the physical aspect of it, but, right, we, we've kind of talked about this before, the use of QR codes or the use of a digital map or a, a virtual tour. Like, can we use, like, is it reasonable to use these funds for those type of projects or endeavors?
Yes. I mean, you could imagine having a QR code that somebody could click on, and that takes us to probably where, is that where you're going, Derek?
Yeah, I realize that, I don't have it bookmarked on this laptop.
But yes, to our, our sculpture and art culture, you know, guide. And again, we've talked about that. That could be a much more elaborate tool, we've looked at more expensive, you know, packages that you could buy. It's something we can keep up with, it's low cost, you know, it's maybe meets that need at a certain level. Certainly, if we had additional monies to buy and maintain some other program, you know, application to track, we would look at that. But, you know, for, for most people, they want to know, what is it? Who made it? When was it done? What are the materials? And why? What, what about it? We have most of the artist's statements, some don't have them, you know, they, it's just art. Most people have a statement, so it gives you another layer of information. We're not there to be able to talk about it and interpret. Likewise, if we had formal, organized tours, we would be able to utilize them, they'd be way stations, if you will, along the way. But right now, there's no real there, there that tells you what's going on, why do we have all these, you know, expensive, you know, we have a super expensive collection of art there, but we're just not delivering the rest of the experience. So we think this would be a good investment, you know, to leave a permanent thing that would create a space for you and these more or less permanent markers that could be mobile and move if a piece moved. Again, the permanent pieces would be easier, you wouldn't assume they would move around, you know, unless there was a problem. So then it would just be keeping up with, with new pieces.
This is the, the site we're looking for, this is a, a mobile device-enabled website, our sculpture tour. On your mobile device, if you press this button, it'll show where you are relative, you know, on, on, I think it's Google Maps to, to, to where these pieces are. And so you might walk up to number two, you know, if you had this pressed, you'd know that number two's in front of you. You hit this link and find out more about After Giverny by John Isherwood. So this, we would, this would be linked to a QR code on each of the sculpture standards and also at the interpretive panel at the Sculpture Seating Plaza. And if at some point there's a better version of, of this, we would just simply update the, the link that the QR code takes you to. Excellent.
So that's probably what you would be linked to, to find your piece or get more information. Again, we would loop back, need to get more, final updates on the design and, you know, actual costs. If there was a way that it fell under, you know, my bit of, our approval authority, certainly we'd go that direction. We have no problem bringing it back to the Board if you, you know, just prefer to see that. But just a little bit of, you know, the celebration is coming up in September. You know, we're trying to get this in place before that, so, you know, bidding in time, all that, you know.
Can we get these in time? Get these faster than a truck?
I believe so. And so we thought if we could get approval tonight, we'll start right away with getting the updates, see what those estimates look like, determining if we need to bid. So there, again, there's two parts, there's the seating area, separate, and then there's the, what we're calling the sculpture standards, you know, that would be purchased, you know, separately, with the design and the material. But the design and the materials would be sort of, you know, kept in mind together.
I'm not sure if you or I mentioned it, but part of the thinking about the seating plaza is also to recognize people that have donated in support of the sculpture garden.
Go ahead.
And so we've got seating blocks here. And right now, there's a sign at the, I'll pull up the map. There's a sign to come across the bridge right here that recognizes people that have donated to the, the sculpture program. We always intend it to be a temporary sign. What we would propose is that gets removed and replaced with these, these seating blocks. And we would carve names of donors onto them and it could be iterative in that, you know, if we had a future donor next year, Addis Memorial will come out and, and engrave their name on that block and so be a way of recognizing people's support and sponsorship of the sculpture program.
You don't have those engraved stone handy at your fingertips?
The one that, that was for the.
Rachel put together, to give us an example.
I think I do.
Yes, if you did, that would probably give everyone. So the, the carved names would be on the front face, not the seated part, but the face of the, the stone block?
When did we receive the Brown gift?
Uh, I believe.
Look at Laura.
Uh, well, it was preemie, but what I, what I recall is, I believe it was in September of last year when we established the fund. So I, I'm not, I don't recall off the top of my head exactly when.
With 2000, I'm just trying to look at the return on investment.
That, that would think, how the, you know, face of the, the seat would look.
And then I think we asked Katie to, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry?
I think we asked Katie, it took a while before we started with the investments.
Correct.
Yeah, she was like shopping around a bit, I remember.
Legwork to decide who and how. I know Nancy asked me last month about, you know, how we're investing those funds. And I did speak with our representative there. And there's currently about $137,000 that's liquid, that's instant access. But the, the remainder is tied up in laddered CDs. And again, interest rates are way in our favor for investing. And what they're currently doing for us and the, and the ladder structure that, that we're following, they continue to encourage that that's the best investment vehicles. So nothing to change. What we're doing now is the best that we can be doing right now to take advantage of those great rates.
You know, we often talk about donor intent. We actually know Dick and Winona when they lived and we worked with them on their agreement. You know, they could see themselves, it's an amazing park, it would need help. The idea of giving a gift that would last, you know, a good while. But they also recognize that you might need more than that. And that if the board felt it was important, they would be given that authority. That's wonderful. Often, that doesn't happen. Usually, it's a more restrictive approach. We understand why and how that works, but this one's not restricted in that way. So we looked at it and thought, you know, this is something we continue to talk about. You know, we unfortunately don't have a foundation structure that we could just put it on a list and like a genie, it, you know, appeared and we had the money to, to do it. So again, it's really an investment with the 25th anniversary. I think the staff is thinking, in 25 years, we haven't had adequate signage, you know, system for this. This might be a time to really kick in and utilize that.
Well, most certainly. I move to approve or Banta Park District Board of Commissioners authorize approximately $65,000 of the Brown Fund principal to be used for the purchase of new interpretive donor plaza and sculpture identification standards.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the point? Hearing none, do a roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. And I, and I think that the donors in this case actually will be very happy with this decision.
Agreed.
Uh, that takes us on to action on any new business removed from the consent agenda. And there was none, so we're at Roman numeral nine, comments from commissioners.
Just one that I forgot to mention in my report from the foundation. Jake Wolf, who is the chair of the nominating committee for the foundation, is looking for names of people. If you want to give forward any names of people that would be good for the foundation, to Kelsey or to me, we can send those on to Jake.
Any other commissioner comments? Hearing none, then we have exhausted our agenda and I will declare us adjourned.